Good evening and welcome to the October 7th meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Sinanian.
Here. Today's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Najarian.
Please rise and join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for tonight's invocation by Bishop Stephen Bills from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
Our Father in Heaven, we invoke Thy name at the beginning of this meeting of the Glendale City Council and feel to thank Thee for our blessings of life, health, family, and liberty. We are grateful for the service of these elected representatives who meet here today to discuss matters of importance and for their staff, for their dedication and service. We pray, Father, that Thou will bless them with wisdom, that their discussions tonight might be productive and civil. We are grateful for other staff members and employees of the city who perform such important tasks for the members, for the citizens of this community. We're especially mindful of those who are occasionally in harm's way and those who protect us, members of the police department and fire department. We're grateful for our schools, for administrators and teachers who work so hard to educate our children. We are mindful of those from this community and others across this country who are in harm's way overseas. A thou wilt protect those in the military and help them accomplish their missions. We again invoke Thy name and dedicate ourselves and our service this evening unto Thee and do so in Thy sacred name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop Gooch. May we have the report, please?
The agenda for October 7th, 2014, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, October 2nd, 2014, on bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What's next?
Next item under presentation and appointments, 3A Agenda Preview for the meetings of Tuesday, October 14th, 2014.
Ms. Beers.
Mayor Sinanian, members of the City Council. For the Glendale Housing Authority for October 14th, we have no business agenda items. For the City Council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a few consent items. Director of Public Works and Community Services and Parks, this is regarding the Fremont Park Tennis Courts lighting resurfacing and Dunsborough Park lighting project. Next, we have Fire Chief. This is regarding dispatching services by Vertigo Fire Communications Center to a couple of more cities. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power quitclaim the city's utility easement at 201 West Lexington Drive to Citibank. That evening also for action items, we have Director of Human Resources memorandum of understanding between the city of Glendale and the Glendale City Employees Association, as well as MOU between the city and the GMA, the Glendale Management Association, and resolutions addressing the compensation and benefits of executive level employees. Lastly, we have a hearing. Director of Community Development, this is regarding an appeal of Historic Preservation Commission denial of design review located at 1555 Valley View Road. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Beers. And what's next?
Under consent items, the following, under consent items, including minutes, the following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requests separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move consent item.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Thank you, Mr. Najarian. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Thank you. What's next?
City Council and staff comments.
Thank you. Ms. Devine.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I've been asked to announce that for those of you that are over 50, there's going to be a senior job fair in Pasadena on October 11th if you're not going to the Kiwanis Duck Race or the Canines in the Park or any of the other activities that are going on here in Glendale. It will be held at the Senior Center in Old Town from 9 until 2. The other couple of items I have, Mr. Zern isn't here, so I'll address them to our city manager. I understand that the Metropolitan Water District gives free sprinkler heads to the community that ask, and they are very water conservation equipment, and they're easy to install. And I'm wondering if we can start some sort of program, especially for those of us that have hillsides and large lawns that we'd really like to conserve more water. So a program, something like that, if we can look into that. Thank you. And the second is, I understand there's a leaf blower exchange that's coming at the end of this year whereby gardeners and landscape, commercial landscapers can turn in their leaf blowers, their old noisy, dirty leaf blowers and get either a rebate or a new one. So can, are we a part of that kind of a program in our community?
I'm presuming that one comes through AQMD?
It does.
Then yes.
Exactly. Good.
We can help advertise.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Friedman?
A couple of things. First, we had a discussion this afternoon about traffic safety and all of the steps the city's been taken, taking to deal with the traffic safety problems and challenges in Glendale. And I hope that if any of you are watching now, don't usually watch the afternoon meetings but are interested in that subject, I recommend that you watch that in its rerun, when it's on reruns. I'm not sure when that is, but it will be repeated throughout the week. And along those lines, I've, I drive north on Brand quite a bit, and I've noticed in the last few months, I've seen something happen several times. It makes me think that there's some kind of problem. But when you come up Brand to the 134, you have two lanes on the left and both lanes turn left. And what I've been seeing is people in the right of those two left lanes go straight. So instead of turning, which they have to do, they go straight in order to make a left turn on Glen Oaks without having to move over, which doesn't seem like it's such a big deal, but I've seen at least five or six cars now do this. And in doing this, they pass Sanchez, I believe it is, which is another left which has a turn lane. So the potential for someone to merge into those cars is very, very high because you're not expecting them to drive through the yellow lines and everything that says you have to turn left here. So my suggestion is to take a look at that intersection and maybe a concrete median just above so that you can't physically drive straight from that lane. So it would be on the other side of Good, of it, is it Good there? It would be on the other side of Good. You'd put something, a little concrete barrier maybe, if it's warranted, so that people can't continue straight out of that lane to turn left on Glen Oaks. If it was just one car I've seen do, I'd seen doing it, I wouldn't bring it up, but I think I've seen six or seven cars in the last couple of weeks. So somehow it's become a habit for people. Okay. And I think it's dangerous. So I just wanted to mention a few events that I went to, and you know, many of us attended as well. First, we attended the Glendale Educational Foundation State of the City, State of the Schools Address last week, where we heard the school board talk about, and the superintendent of schools talk about all of the activities around Glendale School District. And so it was great to have so many members of the community turn out. There had to have been a thousand people there. It was huge. Very, very well attended. And I'm sure the foundation was able to raise quite a bit of money through that event. And I just want to congratulate everyone at Glendale Unified for all the good work they do. I also attended Glendale Memorial, Glendale Memorial Hospital's Foundation Gala two nights ago, I think it was now. They held it in Pasadena this year. Go figure. And it was a really lovely event. And again, I think they raised quite a bit of money. They had a lot of silent auction items and live auction items and a lot of people attending. It was, it's a lot of fun. Last night, Ms. Devine and myself attended the Homeowners Coordinating Council meeting, which had as a special guest Jim Newton, who's a Los Angeles Times reporter. And he talked about Proposition 13 and Proposition 13 reform and different measures that have been tried in the past, and it was very, very interesting. And I wanted to thank the Coordinating Council for hosting such an important topic and a great public event. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Friedman. Yes, Mr. Najarian?
I would like support to bring back to the council a, for information purposes, a status of the 710 gap closure proposals. It is currently moving towards an EIR. The folks who would like to see something other than beside a tunnel, besides a tunnel, are making great strides in sort of exposing the tunnel for the very bad idea that it is. And folks, there's a poll out there, it's called a push poll, where the folks on the end of the line steer you towards giving a particular answer supporting the completion of a tunnel. Please resist those persuasive and leading questions that they're giving you because the tunnel proponents now are waving that around, saying something like 90% of the people in Glendale want a tunnel which is balderdash, and it is all the, the work of a slick westside PR firm whose names shall not be mentioned at this meeting, but at another meeting perhaps. So if someone would support an information item perhaps.
I would support it.
By Public Works or, or executive staff, just so we can see where we are and where we are, where we can go on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. On, I have a couple announcements also. On Saturday, Montrose, our own Montrose hosted Oktoberfest, and that was a very well-attended event. It was a little warm in the afternoon, but regardless of the heat, the really intense heat, a lot of people showed up. Paula Devine was there also, and we had the opportunity to observe students from Franklin Magnet Elementary School, and I'll talk about Franklin a little bit in a second, perform in German, perform songs in German. And it was, I think we can say conclusively, it was a great event, another wonderful Oktoberfest held in Montrose. Also last week, I had the pleasure on Friday of attending Benjamin Franklin Elementary School, which is one of our three magnet elementary schools. And I'm really excited talking about these, you know, our school system because, again, a lot of us have kids in the system, and the schools are an integral component of our city, one of those things that make our city great, and we rise and fall with our schools. But this school is really special. I mean, they have four language immersion program, German, Italian, Spanish, and French. And when we say immersion, it's truly immersion. The teachers do not communicate with the students in any language other than whatever the immersion language it is that the parents choose for the kid. So if you want your kids to have some solid foundations in a foreign language and set them up with a, you know, the wealth of, of the mastery of a foreign language, Franklin Elementary, really impressive. Next week, I will not be at the City Council meeting. I will be at the American Transportation Conference in Houston representing the city of Glendale, so I apologize for my absence in advance. And that's all I have for today. Oh, I'm sorry. One more, one more. On October 24th, Friday, and we'll announce this a few more times, Congressman Adam Schiff, our congressman, is inviting the public to a discussion on Syria and Iraq responding to the humanitarian crisis with a special guest representative, Rob Jenkins, Deputy Assistant Administrator of USAID, the Bureau for Democracy, Conflict, and Humanitarian Assistance. The event will take place, again, on Friday, October 24th, from 7 to 8:30 PM at Glendale Community College's main stage theater auditorium located at 1500 North Verdugo Road. Admission is free, and parking is $3 at Lot B. And I want to encourage everyone who's concerned with what's happening in Syria and Iraq and the really horrendous humanitarian crisis that it has triggered to attend and participate. And that's it. We have no more comments, no comments from staff. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
Six community event and announcement, three minutes.
And, thank you. We have three speaking cards. We'll start with Savada Hamelians, followed by Dave Ferguson. You have three minutes. Please state your first name and last for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. My name is Savada Hamelians. I'm here to announce, I'm here to announce tonight that Home Management Glendale Ara Chapter is proud to host the Ninth Annual Glendale Friendship Games. This is a traditional event that's brought many different organizations from the city in the past, and this year we're delighted to have participation again from three city of Glendale teams, one from the fellow police officers, one, another team that will include city manager Ochoa and a few of the other staff members, as well as a team from engineering. And on Sunday and Saturday, for two hours each, they're going to be participating in some basketball activities over at the Home Management Chapter. So come down and support Scott and see if he's, he can dribble the ball as well as he can.
Round man to rebound, I'm telling you what. Play the defense. Stand the rebound. That's me, right there.
The Friendship Games, the goal is to bring community members from different cultures and ages and foster goodwill, create new and lasting friendship, and unite the community in competitive manner. We want to give an opportunity for aspiring athletes, professionals, and especially the younger generation to show off their talent, pursue athletic excellence, and show true sportsmanship. On Sunday, we will also be hosting a family fun table tennis tournament, again, over at the Home Management Chapter campus. And this is something that's open to the public. This will be a fun day worth of activities and different types of tournaments where all families of all ages can play and participate. And later in the month, we'll be hosting a soccer tournament in conjunction with Region 88, AYSO, in which we will have participation from sports teams in the community, and they will, you know, take advantage of the opportunity to show their soccer skills at the Glendale Sports Complex, and that'll begin October 22nd and go through the, end of the month. So we're, again, we're delighted to have a lot of the support from the community. We've got tremendous support from sponsorship. Glendale Adventist is sponsored, Glendale University College of Law, Alan Gwynn Chevrolet, among a host of others. And part of the proceeds that we're going to raise from this, we've decided as an organization to help support the Police Star Program and the Explorers Program. So it's a worthwhile effort, and we encourage everybody who can to come and participate, attend, and come and support, and see if, you know, your, your city manager has got what it takes to win the championship.
Thank you, Mr. Hamelians. Yes, Ms. Devine?
Top score any points in that game?
We, I think we have to zero in on the hour of that game, so is there a particular time?
Yes, the games on Saturday will, will, because we have four teams participating, they'll be quicker tournament games. So they'll be from 1 to 3 on Saturday, as well as from 1 to 3 on Sunday. And each, each team will play two because we want to give people enough time to rest.
Would you repeat the address?
Sure. The address is over at 3347 North San Fernando Road.
Which is just west or south of Glendale Avenue on Sunday?
Yes. Yes.
It's close by that intersection.
It's very close, yes. Yeah, the table tennis tournament will happen in North Gym, and the basketball games will happen in the main campus, so they're almost two blocks apart. But again, we're delighted to host the event and bring community partnerships together and showcase our sports capabilities.
By the way, when you say tournament, table, I mean, I've seen, it's, it's a tournament. There are.
Well, no, but this is different. This is not meant to actually bring out tournament players. This is more about family and family interaction. So there'll be games where family members, father, son, mother, you know, brother, all these, all these different combinations can come and play together. So it's about, but there's, again, sports prizes, and there's, there's going to be rewards for the teams that do perform well. So it's a little competition, but it's also meant to be, you know, lighthearted.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Hamelians.
All right, thank you so much.
Dave Ferguson, followed by Lilia Avakin.
Mayor and members of council, I'm the founder of the new Sejura Youth Orchestra. The orchestra is modeled after the El Sisto sistema, and we will be providing, beginning at the Cerritos Elementary School, free music education, free group lessons, and free instruments to the students at that school who participate in the program. We hope to have it expand. We also, to kick off the, the program, are doing a launch concert, and we're very fortunate that La Sierra University in Riverside County has agreed to participate in that. The university will be with us on the 9th of November, and they will be presenting a concert that will provide Dvorak's Ninth Symphony, the New World Symphony, which is what we're doing for these kids, creating a new world for them. By the way, Sejura means, is, is a musical term that refers to the break that happens. Lots of people in music refer to it as the railroad, but it means a complete break, and that's what we're giving for these kids, to give them a break from things. Anyway, this concert will be on the 9th of November at 7:00 PM. We'd like to invite all of you to attend and members of the city to attend. We have several different categories to try and raise some significant funds to get the orchestra launched. We have VIP tickets at $250 per person. Those tickets also provide an opportunity for the parents and the children that are participating in the new orchestra to attend at no cost. There will be a reception following. Besides that, there's reserved seats at 75, and the general admission tickets are only $20, so we hope to be able to fill the auditorium. The Glendale City Seventh Adventist Church has donated their venue for this of 800 seats, so we're looking to have a nice group there. And Glendale Arts is helping us to promote this on their site as well, so we're very grateful to them. We've been working with Glendale's Unified School District and a number of other places around the city to get this all launched, and we're going to be launching in the next couple of weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Lilia Avakin.
Very much. Good evening, Mayor Sinanian and council members. I'm Lilia Avakin, and I'm representing Armenian Entertainment Production today, which invited Yerevan State Comedy Theater after Hakoparonyan from Armenia to perform here in Los Angeles. It's an, it's an award-winning play, same time next year. The story actually belongs to a Canadian writer, Bernard Slade, and they're going to perform that here on October 10 and 12 at Beyond the Stars Palace. I wanted to invite everyone because it's a great play about people, about relationship, relationships, about different topics. It's a comedy, but it actually talks about, it actually shows a lot of interesting sides of human relationships. So that's all, October 10 and 12 at Beyond the Stars Palace. And it's, again, plays coming from Armenia. Thank you very much. Hope to see everyone there.
Thank you, Ms. Avakin. We have no more speaking cards. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
Under action items, Director of Public Works and Community Development regarding Proposition 84, Green Streets Demonstration Project, 8A1, Resolution Accepting Funds and Executing Necessary Grant Documents, and Number 2, Resolution Appropriating $997,900.
Mr. Goland?
Pitching in for a sick mobility planner, Mike Nielsen, will have, actually, these two gentlemen at the council's direction have been most involved, their two departments, Public Works, CDD, trying to leverage grant funds to express the council's vision of finding a more walkable city, and we're experimenting with these two unique streets. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Rubik, and he'll give you the presentation.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're very excited to bring this item to you for approval, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary grant documents for the Prop 84 Urban Greening Grant, and as mentioned, appropriating $997,900 in grant funds for Glendale's first green street project. This 100% grant-funded project will combine stormwater management, water quality, pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements into one project. Located on Harvard Street between Brand Boulevard and Glendale Avenue, and on Louise Street between Wilson Avenue and Maple Street, the project includes four new mid-block crossings, new curb extensions at five intersections, bioswells within parkways, 99 new trees, wayfinding signs, charos, and bicycle lane markings. For those who don't know, bioswells are landscape elements designed to remove silt and pollution from surface runoff water, releasing it to the watershed or storm sewer. They consist of a wide and shallow ditch filled with vegetation, compost, or riprap. The water's flow path is designed to maximize the time water spends in the swell, which helps trap pollutants and silt, and also helps in irrigating the landscaping. The Green Streets Demonstration Project is strategically located in downtown Glendale and will encourage residents, employees, and visitors to walk to downtown destinations, including the Americana at Brand, the Central Library, and the Museum of Neon Art. The project is a connection point to existing and proposed bicycle routes in the city, including the Riverdale Maple Greenway, as well as destination outside downtown, including Glendale High School. Once the grant is approved by council, staff will select a consultant for the project design in fall of this year, in the next couple of months, coming back to council for award of contract in early 2015. Design and community outreach for the project will occur through late 2015, with construction starting in early 2016 and anticipated completion around late 2016. With that, we'll entertain any questions you may have. Thank you.
Yes.
You say, will there be an RFP to issue to, for the consultant?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Devine, we will issue an RFP for design consultants for all the improvements, primarily though for the bioswells that we haven't done in the city before.
So, and within this RFP, will you be mentioning, my concern is the work on the library. Is this going to be done before that or after that? Or it's 2016? And I'm just concerned about the impact of the renovation on the library, if we do all of this beautiful work, which it looks gorgeous if it turns out that way, that it doesn't all get, get ruined? And also, the mobility study is coming back, and what about the possibility of one-way streets? Would that be impacted? Or will you mention that in the, in the RFP?
Councilmember Devine, as I indicated, the request for proposals will be specifically addressing landscape design, bioswells, and the concrete improvements. However, since both the Central Library project and this project are handled by the same department, we'll make sure to coordinate it so there're not any conflict or major inconveniences to the pedestrian or the public.
Or that that work doesn't get kind of destroyed by the next bit of work?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Devine.
Well, it's, I've been hoping that we were going to be doing bioswells for a while. They're very water efficient. It's a great way to do landscaping and to retain the water on site. Green streets, as Rubik knows, is something that I've been asking about for a long time. I think Ms. Devine makes a great point. I mean, if we, I don't remember in the mobility study whether that was one of the streets that was recommended to be a one-way street. Do you remember? Does anybody know?
In the mobility study, we did, we did not identify one-way streets, and, and if we were to do that, we would probably not include the streets that we consider predominantly for bicycles and pedestrians, and this is actually consistent with the mobility studies, bicycle pathway, and the, and the mobility of pedestrians. So the one-way streets would be streets other than Harvard.
I thought that there were one-way streets in the document that I saw.
We did study them at the time. We concluded that they were not recommended.
Okay. So I thought that part of the reason for one-way streets was to help facilitate more bike lanes, that it was easier to do them on a one-way street than a two-way street.
I think we can get into that on the 21st. However, we did look at one-way streets at the time, and we recommended against them.
Okay. Well, I'm not advocating for them. I just think she makes a great point that if we were going to revisit that and if that was ever going to be a recommendation, how this would, how that would impact any investment that we make. But it sounds like you're not planning on changing your recommendation to not have at least Harvard be a one-way street.
Yes, and if we do in the future, one-way streets and pedestrian bicycle streets don't go necessarily hand in hand, and at that point, we will have to probably lifecrit them.
Yeah, I think that looking at Harvard would not be the most suitable one for, right.
One-way streets were killed by the transportation engineer at that time. He's no longer here. That's why we asked.
Okay, well, glad to see this. I, I mean, it's too bad we can't do it faster. It seems like a one and a half year timeframe is long.
Yeah, Councilmember Friedman, so once we go through the competitive selection of the consultant, that's probably going to take three to four months. Then we'll have to bring that contract back to council for approval. Then the design and community outreach will probably take another six to eight months. Sets, puts us through another year or so, yeah.
Sets, puts us through another year or so, yeah.
Six to eight months?
The design will take six months.
Okay. Well, I'm sure it'll be worth it.
Yeah, we'll see if we can shorten that period, once we select a consultant.
Okay. Thank you.
I think our impatience to get this going is conditioned by our excitement of the project. It's a good thing, so we'll wait patiently. It'll go through the motions, and hopefully we have a very good product that we're proud of. I'm still hoping and willing to work towards having those two blocks of Maryland blocked off the traffic entirely, and having a pedestrian promenade at some point in the city of Glendale.
I'll move 8A1 and 2.
Second.
I'll move 8A1 and 2.
Thank you.
Second.
May we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
What's next?
8B, Chief of Police regarding Enforcement Aviation Services for Avionics Maintenance Services and Repairs to Joint Air Support Unit Helicopters. One, Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Approving a Three-Year Agreement with Enforcement Aviation Services Incorporated.
Given the small size of this particular contract, I think it's about $33,000 a year for three years, not to exceed $100,000, and given that the other vendors have moved out of state, you know, it makes it much more difficult for us to get the timely repairs that we're looking for, for the airships. And so we believe it's suitable at this point to go with the dispensing of competitive bid. However, the chief and his team are here to answer any question the council might have.
Questions?
Do we have a motion?
I'll move 8B1.
Second.
Do we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
8C, Director of Community Development Regarding Amending Chapter 30.25 of the GMC 1995 Pertaining to Design Review Requirements for Projects During Processing of Historic District Overlay Zone Application.
Yes.
And one, Motion Initiating Amendment to Zoning Code.
Thank you. Mr. Ochoa?
We will have a team presentation for you here as Mr. Agani will introduce the topic. Suffice to say that there is a consideration of timing and rights and neighborhood compatibility that are all converging on this particular point of our zoning code and historic designation. So with that, Hassan, do you want to?
Before you do, I just want to check with the city attorney. We discussed this earlier, but I want to be very clear and be sure that we're on the record. Next week, with the discussion about Valley View, I have to recuse myself, because I live within the proximity. This does not impact that, correct? I don't have to recuse myself from this?
That's correct. This is just initiating a zoning code amendments in the future.
In the future.
Next week's will be under the current zoning guidelines, so.
And the reason I mention it is just because that case might be brought up by somebody as an example in regards to this, but that would not lead me to have to recuse, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and members of the council. All I need to do is to stress that this is only the initiation of the zoning code amendment. After this, there are discussions that will take place, and we'll go to the Planning Commission, and then afterwards, the recommendation of the Planning Commission will come to you. To the extent that we're looking at different directions to go in the staff report, at that point, we're not asking you for direction in those areas. This was just an information piece for you in the staff report. So we only request that you allow us to initiate this. And with that, Mr. Foy will give you the background.
Yeah, I will just very briefly address the context of this, the Valley View case you're going to see next week, and the issue of pipeline status of projects whenever rules, or in that case, zoning designation changes. We have a small team of planners who write most of our zoning code changes. In every ordinance that they write, they're very good at addressing the pipeline issue, but it is something they have to add to each ordinance. They're so good at it that many people in the community, and even some of our staff, thought it was just an automatic rule. And that is how it came to be that the Valley View property owners and that case got into the pickle that it's in. So I just want to kind of address the elephant in the room. It was simply a failure to connect the dots between the zoning code change for historic and the normal efforts we put in to address pipeline issues. It was not trying to force anyone to go through, trying to get someone to DRB to ignore historic issues, or to do a last-minute switch to frustrate the property owners. It was a very regrettable mistake. It's, certainly, we don't want to put anyone, the community or these property owners especially, through. So with that, I will just turn it over to Jay to give a little bit more of an explanation of how we intend to look at this question.
Thank you, Mr. Foy.
I'll just briefly go over our goals for this ordinance initiation. We recognize that there is kind of a gap in the existing historic district ordinance that doesn't address the interim process from the time HPC takes a potential district under consideration to the time that it's actually designated.
This applies to Brockmont, not to the others.
Our goal is to amend.
No. I mean, does this affect other historic districts?
This will affect future historic districts. It won't affect Brockmont because this has already happened. So the goal is to amend Title 30.
Future ones.
Yeah, for future districts, so that we don't have this come up when future districts are nominated. So the goal is to amend the ordinance in a way that's going to establish a policy that we're going to use from here on out. We want to do this very carefully. We want to do research. We want to find out what other jurisdictions do. We're going to reach out to the community. We're going to talk to community groups. We're going to talk to architects. We'll find other stakeholders who would be interested in discussing this. We'll definitely be discussing it with the city attorney's office, and then ultimately, whatever alternatives that we propose, we'll come up with a preferred alternative that we're going to bring to Historic Preservation Commission, to the Planning Commission, because it is a zone, or an ordinance change, and then ultimately to council for review. Our goal is to just work within best practices and identify the best possible way to do design review during the, kind of, this interim period that we're concerned about. If you have any questions?
We're not making any decision tonight. We're just letting you go.
And you're just letting us do our research.
You'll talk to HPC and planning?
Ultimately, we'll talk to them after we do our community outreach and come up with an idea that we support.
But as you see in the staff report, there are different alternatives for the council to really help set a framework for how we would go forward. Again, Jay, maybe you can talk just a little bit about the intervening time when we know that a historic district is going to be presented and considered, and the ability of a homeowner within that proposed district to move forward with their individual project. As I said at the beginning, the idea that we have a convergence of the needs and wants and desires of the neighborhood versus the needs, wants, and desires of that individual homeowner in a limbo period before a district is created.
Yeah. Currently, until a district is designated, the Design Review Board has design review authority for any projects proposed in the district, and we also use the citywide comprehensive design guidelines during that period. The concern in the community is we're not using the historic district guidelines, because it's not a district at that point, and the Historic Preservation Commission isn't involved. We gave you three alternatives as suggestions for discussion tonight. We think there are other alternatives out there, so we don't want to be limited to those right now. We think there are pros and cons to various ideas, and we're going to try to hash those out as we do our outreach, and ultimately, those will help inform your decision.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question.
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
Clarify for me, a contributory house to a historic district. Can it, is a contributing house have to be in the district, or can it border on the district?
It has to be within the district boundary.
Okay, so that's only context in which we're using the word contributing.
We're not really talking, in this, we're not talking about contributors so much.
No, in general.
In general, it's inside the district boundary.
The house has to be within. Okay, thank you.
So do you want us to narrow this down before you go? I thought you wanted to take it to them first.
We prefer that you not narrow it too much, because we want to have all of our options open, so we can explore the topic.
Yeah, I thought we weren't discussing it, and you just said you wanted us to discuss it now. I was confused.
I'm happy, I think we're happy to hear anything that you have to say, and that'll inform as how we move forward, but we don't want to have any decisions made, because we haven't done any of our outreach yet.
So there's three alternatives you'd like us to tell you if we see a fourth or fifth? Is that?
If you're intrigued to do that, we welcome it.
I'm not intrigued, I'm just.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, the only reason we gave those examples is to illustrate that there are many different ways to think through this issue, and different people have different viewpoints, and we intend to have that dialogue with the community and find the best possible scenario that we could recommend to you, and then bring that back to you in the future.
Mr. Najarian?
So what is the status quo? If we were not to change anything, what is the current status quo of the process?
From the time that the Historic Preservation Commission takes a district under consideration to the time it's designated, DRB's the Design Review Authority, and we use the citywide guideline, design guidelines.
And why should we change that? Why should we consider it?
Some members of the community would be concerned that during this interim period, character-defining features of potential contributing properties in a district might be stripped away or lost in some way, and it could change the tone of the district, change the character, and that's, I believe, the concern of community members from the historical society and others.
But there should never be any assumption that because a district is being proposed, that council is going to approve it.
But we totally understand that, and that's why we're going to look.
Therein lies the rub.
So that's the problem. If council says no, then we're bestowing upon HPC. One of the alternatives is to bestow upon HPC that stricter design guidelines and have that body make the decision, and in the end, let's say council says, although I think we're, we've approved all districts.
We have.
So far.
But there's the chance, we say no, then have we imposed an unfair burden on the applicant?
That's exactly what we'll be considering. I think it will help when we look at the practices of other cities. Other local jurisdictions do have interim controls of some sort, and we'll try to see what, which of those might apply in Glendale.
You mentioned Pasadena and LA were two.
Right. We'll go deeper than that.
Sure.
But I think, Mr. Najarian, your point is very well taken. Therein lies the rub. If the council ultimately were not to approve a district, has that individual property owner been, not been subjected to a heightened level of scrutiny that otherwise wouldn't have been applied to them? These are folks' real rights, and you're setting policy to determine how we handle those rights.
Do you have cards, Mr. Mayor?
I have no cards, no.
Well, I can tell you my comments. I'm glad you're doing this. I definitely see where there'd be concern, particularly if there's somebody who knows a district might be coming and who wants to turn a contributor into a non-contributor. So I understand the reason you're doing it, and I wish you luck with forming some kind of consensus and something that's fair and workable and not all too onerous, but at the same time, protecting our historic neighborhoods, because that, to me, is an ultimate goal and the most important thing, is to make sure that those neighborhoods remain, keep their integrity, and keep the things that make them special and make them historic.
Ms. Devine?
I just would like to say that I agree with Councilmember Friedman, but it would be my suggestion on making your decision, and once you get out there in the community, is to, I think the less steps that have to be taken in this process, the better. Just keep it simple, keep it smart, and I think we can avoid errors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver? Do you have any comments?
No, I call it a loophole, whatever. It has to be closed, unfortunately, for what we're going to see next week. It got caught without a, without this being involved to begin with, where others did not. Just one of those catch-22s that's going to be evident next week. The closing the loophole makes total sense, so it's a level playing field for everybody.
That was answered my questions.
It's okay with me. Let's give them the options and let them come back.
Let's see what they bring back, and again, I always want to make sure that the rights and the interests of property owners, there has to, there has to be a balance struck between those rights and historical preservation interests. One should not overpower the other, but that's what we're going to hear, right? When you come back, just see what it is that they bring back to us.
Say, last week, there was an article in the LA Times about a historic house by a noted architect from turn of the century. Developer wants to tear it down and put in six, eight homes. The Historic Commission, whatever, in the city of LA, denied. Said, no, he can go ahead and tear it down, the historic house, tear it down and build the six new ones. You know, that couldn't happen in Glendale.
Good, that's Wilton Beckford, right? It's not Wilton Beckford?
Yes, yeah, we're looking at it.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, they decided it wasn't a good example of his work.
Yeah. And now it's going to be torn down.
I'll move 8C1.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Thank you. Next item?
Twelve, oral communications, five minutes. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. First speaker, Margaret Hammond, followed by Mike Mohell. Ms. Hammond? Yep, take your time. Take your time.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff, and members of the audience, and a lot of people out there, I hope. My name is Margaret Hammond. I'm a 50-year-s somewhat-year member of Glendale, living here in my same house on Adams Hill. Anyway, first thing off, lucky item pickup, 818-548-3916. I happen to be a member of a committee, and that's going to be one of the things that we are dedicating ourselves to, because there's still a lot of couches and mattresses laying out there for a couple of weeks at a time. The other thing is the Glendale Medic Program, which, if you allow $5 a month, guarantees you that you will be, have service from the fire department, Glendale Fire Department, to pick you up without any charge. That's all the members of your household. It's a great bargain, because some of the insurances do not pay now for your ambulance, and it can be $1,000. Now, my personal thing right now is coming around to water and power. I pay for the water at my apartments that I have. I pay for the trash bin, which is $60 a month. My tenants are charged for trash pickup, even though I've said before that is double-dipping, and the city of LA said it is double-dipping, and I know we've gone around about this. But I happen to be involved in a situation where one of the apartments was vacant. So they said, in order for me to have work done, I would pay the electricity. When I got my bill, I was charged a, for a new fee, for a new customer fee, I was charged, which was $15. I was charged a trash pickup, $25.47, and so I was pretty mad, and the taxes on top of that. So I didn't pay the trash. I paid the bill and deducted the trash. I said, no, I already pay it. I don't live in that apartment. I'm only getting it cleaned. Why should I be paying trash again? So anyway, I just got a notice from the Water and Power, and it was $65.37, they said. I deducted the amount of the $24.87 at the time when I paid the bill. I don't know where they get this $67.37, and they're threatening for me to be sent to collection. Now, that is just stupid. It's damn trash, to tell you the truth. That's all there is to it. To be charged twice for rent, for trash, and I don't even live there. But, and it's just beyond me, how that can be. So I don't know what they're going to do, whether they're going to take me for collection or what they're going to do. I haven't made up my mind what I'm going to do. So whether it's going to be, I'm going to be putting up a real battle about it, because I just think it's not fair, and if only the owners of apartments would get together and say, we pay for the trash bins. Some of them, I don't know how many they pay or how much, but it's time to stop it. Now, my other beef is about the bicycles. I checked, and there used to be a bicycle license here, and there is. It's on our books. There's an ordinance, and I marked it down, but I didn't, it was 30.10 or something, and that bicycle licenses were to be collected, and used to be. be, when I first came, they were. The reason I think we need them is, number one, people riding on the sidewalks, they have no right. I phoned the DMV in Sacramento, and I spoke to a young man, and he told me, no, that's against the law to ride on the sidewalks. You're only allowed to ride along the side of the curb, not on the sidewalks. And I said, well, what about all this, going through lights, they don't make signals? I had somebody go right through a red light. I'm sitting at a red light, and the guy in the bicycle goes through at Lexington and Bran, and I went, ah! I mean, waiting for him to get knocked off his bike. But anyway, and absolutely, there are rules about the bicycles. I really feel that people who ride bikes should have training, the same as people who drive cars. After all, they're using our roads, they're using our facilities. They feel entitled, that they have to have half the road, or however much we give them. It's time to do something about it, and it's on our books that we can charge a license, which would enable people to identify people who crash into you, crash into your car, or into you as a pedestrian, and I've seen that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe the code says that they cannot ride a bicycle in the commercial district on the sidewalk, but they can in the residential.
No, period. I talked to the DMV, and it was that they could not ride it on the sidewalk.
I'm, I'm not talking to you, Margaret.
Pardon me, you're talking to me.
Okay, shut up.
Mr. Golangin, what's the story with double-dipping on trash?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council will have to look into the bill and see what the...
Sounds as though she stopped service and then restarted service, and the service fee got applied, because it's a different unit, but I'm sure we can have customer service talk with her.
So do we charge the building owner a, a fee for trash pickup, and then charge the individual apartment units?
Without knowing the specifics of her account, I couldn't tell you, as I sit here.
I mean, is that, no, as a matter of policy, is that, is that what we do in this city?
I don't know right now.
Can we check? Can we have an answer on that?
Sure.
And, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Cho, can you get the information for me, pass it out, where you can ride a bicycle? Since nobody, where you can legally ride a bicycle on the sidewalk, if I'm wrong?
You're right, the person at the DMV who she spoke to was wrong. That's not state law.
Well, you don't want to get in trouble here.
No, I don't think, I don't think you can ride on the sidewalk.
That's not true. It's up to municipalities to, in our city, according to our charter, the police chief is here, you can't ride a bicycle in a commercial district.
That's right.
On the sidewalk, including a multifamily commercial district, because that's commercial, but you can't in a residential district.
I believe that's right, but we'll get the answer for sure and send it around.
I've looked into this more than once.
So let's, let's just get an answer, I mean, it's either yes or no.
So if I'm wrong, I'll apologize.
Yeah, I mean, no, we should all know, and our residents should know what it is.
That's right.
Right.
They knew both.
Right, and, you know, the issue of cyclist safety and, and driving habits or riding habits, it's like with anything else, you, you have good cyclists and you have bad cyclists. I, I see cyclists blow through Grand View and Kenneth, the light, at the speed of light, I mean, they go so fast, and I'm horrified at what kind of danger that poses, but, you know, you see that, it strikes you, but then you'll see fifteen others who don't do that, who stop and wait, so it's one of those things. Mike Mohell, followed by Richard Leiboff?
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian and council members. My name is Mike Mohell. Two weeks ago, Councilman Aron Najarian gave another one of his Oscar-winning performances when he told the viewing audience not to listen to me, that I was lying, and what I had to say was spin, and that I had an alternative motive. Councilman Najarian, in the 2013 election, do you deny your statement at the Northwest Homeowners Association Candidate Council Forum, calling for a moratorium on downtown development? Don't you remember standing up in front of your colleague Laura Freeman, saying you were going to put the brakes on any new construction? Councilman Najarian, you are the liar. After the April 2013 election, in an October two, 2013 news press article by Ms. Brittany Levine, she stated Najarian had approved many of the projects popping up in the city corps, but had criticized recent proposals. Yes, Councilman Najarian, after the damage was done, you became this great environmentalist and started rejecting some of the new mega apartment complexes. A partial list of apartments and condos approved by you and your colleagues in the previous council, and with minimum parking and with parking variances are L E V lofts, formerly called Broadway lofts. Developer was given a three million dollars parking concession over the life of the contract. By allowing for tenant usage of the Maryland Street Public Parking Garage, built and paid for by the Glendale taxpayers, Councilman Najarian had been critical of the project, but after another dog and pony show, at the end of the day, he voted for it. Six hundred-seat Lenley Theater. The city's taxpayers contributed one point one million dollars towards one level of parking. Developer was given a variance for a hundred and twenty-five parking spaces. Let me repeat myself, ladies and gentlemen, a hundred and twenty-five parking spaces. Developer saved millions of dollars at taxpayers' expense by not requiring additional subterranean parking, and council again allowed the usage of the Maryland Street Public Parking Garage, again, built and paid for by the Glendale taxpayers. San Fernando Corridor. Recently, Councilman Najarian, didn't you and your colleagues go outside of the Downtown Pacific Plan, that's the DSP, and unanimously approved in July the first round design of the hundred and, hundred and eighty-unit Office Depot mixed-use apartment complex? This property at the corner of Broadway and Pacific is surrounded by single-family homes and low-level commercial buildings, and in the future, this mega complex will stand out like a sore thumb. Neighborhoods will now be fighting each other for parking space. If council members were really concerned about the future, they would push for more parking spaces rather than parking variances that only make the developers wealthier. Council members, in the near future, are you studying ways to pass a new construction bond in order to build a new public parking structure for our children to pay for your mistakes? The out-of-town developers, their friends, and council members will be long gone, with their profits, as the Glendale taxpayers will be left holding the bag. Why? After the damage has been done by Councilman Najarian and his colleagues, Mr. Najarian has the audacity to spend taxpayers' money in asking staff to report on the DSP. Mr. Najarian no longer lives in downtown Glendale, but moved with his new bride to a beautiful hilltop home in the Verdugo Woodlands, away from the maddening crowd and the traffic nightmare. Going forward, this council will continue to build outside of the previously approved city master plan. Councilman Najarian, you are the one who continues to lie to the public with the spin. What is your ilt, alternative motive? Like your friend, convicted felon John Trayman?
Thank you.
He too could not defend the public policies and would go personal and attack his opponents.
Thank you, Mr. Moyle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moyle, thank you. Mr. Najarian? Well, Mr. Mohell, I'm not going to let you push me around like you push around other people, like your neighbors and other people who filed charges against you. I'm not going to let you push me around. In fact, your whole diatribe is confusing. There's no one else on this council who has fought development as much as I have, and yet you single me out? I'm not going to let you push me around. In fact, I order you out of this office and this room.
He's already left.
Thank you, thank you for leaving, Mr. Mohell.
Mr. Mohell has gone home.
Finally, he listened to me and left.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Mr. Leiboff?
You drove him out finally.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian and other esteemed city council members and city staff. I'm happy to be here this evening, and the reason I'm here is that this morning, as you may or may not know, we had a fire in my neighborhood, which is the Brockmont Park Historic District, although oddly enough, it was on Brockmont Drive, which is not a part of the district, as you may or may not know. But the reason I'm here is that I wanted to thank Chief Skogans, and I didn't catch the name of the fire captain that was there this morning, but there were, they were there for, I, I think, about three hours, falling up on a fire, and what had happened is that in a residence on Brockmont Drive, there was a, a fire with the garbage disposal. Apparently, there was a short in the spot of the garbage disposal, which caused things under the sink to ignite, to, to the point, and there was, there was no one home at the time, that they had to chop into the roof, they had to take the door down, there was damages extensive to the point of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I was very impressed with the fact that Chief Skogans was there, and the fire responded, I would say, within five minutes, because I live directly down from that house, and it, it certainly could have been a terrible incident in our neighborhood at this time of the year, when we have high fire danger. As you may recall, it's approaching now, three years ago, that we had another fire on Brockmont Drive, that I won't go into the details, but I think many of you know about that house, that still was raised, and there is not a replacement house, and, and so forth, and, you know, interestingly enough, there's a house now on, on, you know, both sides of the one remaining, that, that hasn't had a fire, but I would hope that Brockmont Drive wouldn't have any future problems. But I think what this calls into question, and this is another point I wanted to bring to your attention, is the fact that we need so badly our fire and police in this city. And I think what we're seeing now is cutbacks in those types of services, and it calls to the question that some, like Mr. Mohell and others, have brought before you, is the transfers between GWP and the City General Fund. And I know that this is a question that is still before us, it will be considered in the near future here, and I guess I'm here before you to tell you today that we need all, of course, to support the continued transfer of those funds from the electric side to the general fund, if we are to have these very essential fire and police services. I don't see how there could be any other alternative for this city in the future. We need those services so badly, and many others. I know that Mr. Hagani and his department, the Community Development Department, also suffers from the lack of funding in this day and age, because there isn't sufficient funding to have the staff that is needed to cover all of the issues, such as the one that was dealt with this, this evening. All of those are critical, essential issues that need the attention of the staff and your attention within the city. So, once again, I want to thank Chief Skogans and his staff for attending to this fire this morning, and I can only say that I think we need to get everyone on the bandwagon to continue to support the city with the electric fund transfer from GWP. Thank you very much.
Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Leiboff.
Did the Freeman's cat survive?
Excuse me? Oh, the cat, yeah, there was one that I think...
They were taking it...
...got oxygen, and then one apparently drifted away. I don't know if they ever found the other cat.
One, they were, they were taking one to the vet. I just wondered if you knew...
Yeah, I don't know what happened with, with all that, but that's very good of you, Mr. Weaver, to bring that up.
Richard, you brought up the transfer, and there is a lawsuit, you know, suing the city over the transfer, but beyond that, we're told that there's also a petition circulating for a ballot amendment in the next election in April in Glendale, that would once again try to stop the utility users tax, which was just passed a couple of years ago, which is another major source of funding. So something else to keep on your radar, and for everyone to keep on their radar, because if we lose that source of funds, once again, we're looking at cutting police and fire, those kinds of services. And just so people know, that's basically to extend a tax to cell phones, the same way you pay a tax on your landline. So if that was to pass, people who just use a cellphone wouldn't have to pay the tax, but people who use their phone at home would, so it would create a very unequal situation for some people.
Okay. And I'd like to thank you, Mr. Leiboff, for coming forward. It's too often that we hear the noise and the, the bad attitude of disgruntled members of this community who take for granted the essential public safety services that you just referenced. Indeed, maybe five minutes or ten minutes delay of that fire engine to the scene could have resulted in a loss of an entire neighborhood, hillside with lives and pets and children and everything, so I appreciate that you appreciate, and that you came forward with a cool, calm voice of reason, your breath of fresh air compared to some of the other antagonistic comments that we have from the residents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Leiboff. What's next?
New business?
Do we believe we have any new business? Do we have a motion?
Second.
And we're adjourned at seven, ten PM.